Okay, good evening, everyone. We are going to go ahead and get started. There is technically no board, so I'm not going to sit here because I don't have this seat quite yet until we start with the process of formally getting sworn in. So at this time, I'm going to be sworn in by District Court Judge David Fadden III. And I'd like to ask my wife Jeannie and son Gavin if they would join me at the podium. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Do you, Jeffrey T. Odom solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God?
I do.
Do you, Jeffrey T. Odom solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as mayor, so help me God?
I do.
Do you, Jeffrey T. Odom solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help me God?
I do.
Congratulations, Mayor. [applause] Am I buying a house, or is there just something?
Well, you're buying one of them.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, at this time, we are going to move to Alderman-elect Bobby Astor for Ward Three. He is going to be sworn in by Representative, North Carolina State Representative, Mr. Steve Tyson.
Okay, Mr. Astor.
Yes, sir.
It's a pleasure to see you. I knew your father well. I worked for him in high school, as you did, so I know he would be pleased to see this happen.
All right. I, Robert V. Astor, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God.
I do.
I, Robert V. Astor, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Alderman, so help me God.
I do.
I, Robert V. Astor, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. [applause]
You can do that now.
Thank you. This is my son's oldest sister. My son, very proud of a season and my life of forty-two years. I knew I was once here, she did. Thank you.
Steve, don't go far. The next Alderman that we've sworn in is Alderman-elect Bob Brinson for Ward Six, and also he will be sworn in by Steve Tyson.
Okay. Mr. Alderman-elect, would you like to introduce this beautiful lady to the side?
Yes, it's my wife, Amy, of thirty anniversaries. I can't say yours, but then my daughter, Hattie, also.
Okay, Mr. Brinson.
I, Robert W. Brinson Jr., do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God.
So help me God.
I, Robert W. Brinson Jr., do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Alderman, so help me God.
So help me God.
I, Robert W. Brinson Jr., do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Congratulations all. [applause]
In due course. Okay, thank you, Mr. Alderman.
Five. Where are you going?
You have a little job.
All right. Next up is Alderman-elect Johnny Ray Kenzie, and he's going to have his oath administered by our city clerk, Ms. Brenda Blanco.
I'd like for my son to come forward, and the Riffield family to come forward, please.
I, Johnny Ray Kenzie, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God. I, Johnny Ray Kenzie, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Alderman, so help me God. I, Johnny Ray Kenzie, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me God.
I do.
Next will be Alderman-elect Rick Prill, and he will also be sworn in by our city clerk, Brenda Blanco.
I, Rick Prill, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God.
I do.
I, Rick Prill, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Alderman, so help me God.
I do.
I, Rick Prill, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
All right, and last but certainly not least, Alderman-elect Hazel Royal, representing Ward Two, will be sworn in by the Honorable Michael Jordan, North Carolina, Mi- Michael Jordan, Michael Morgan, North Carolina Supreme Court Associate Justice.
Mr. Mayor, I just wish I had his foot.
Me too, me too.
It's an honor to be back in my beloved hometown of New Bern and to have this clear district ministerial bill of office to my high school classmates.
This is my husband, George, of forty-eight years. My daughter, Prashana, Royal Jones, and my son, George Royal, number two.
You take your left hand on the Bible at this time, raise your right. I say all the words of your oath, and then if you give up a common sign of assent such as I will or I do at the end of it, I'll break it down into three segments. Do you, Hazel B. Royal, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God?
I do.
And do you, Hazel B. Royal, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Alderman, so help me God?
I do.
And do you, Hazel B. Royal, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help me God?
I do.
You may lower your hand. Alderman-elect B. Royal, grab your hand.
All right, we will officially open the meeting of the August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Aldermen. At this time, it is my responsibility for the prayer, so I've asked my friend and pastor Scott Cockhill from New Life Church. Pastor, if you'd come to the podium and offer us an introductory prayer, please.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for the privilege to be here. Thank you for this great city. Lord, thank you for the grace that is always sufficient, the love that rallies people to you, the peace that's poured on us when we are in your will. And God, thank you for giving us opportunities to serve one another and opportunities to lead. And I do pray for our new mayor. I pray for my friend. Lord, I pray for this board. Lord, I love this city. I believe you are at work here, and I just pray that you would give all the wisdom, the unity, and, Lord, the strength that this leadership now needs to lead our city in the direction you would have us to go. Lord, I pray for great days ahead. I pray, Lord, that we would see things that maybe we never thought we would see before, even in our own city. So, Lord, I just pray for a fresh anointing now, to much is given, much is required. And so, Lord, I pray that all of us understand that wherever you have placed us, you've placed us there to be faithful and honor you, and so help us to do that. We love you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you would, please, join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the good soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, would please call the roll.
Alderman Prill.
Here.
Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kenzie.
Here.
Alderman Best. Alderman Brinson.
Here.
For number five, I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda. I make a motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Number six, comments by the board members followed by a brief reception. I'm going to go back to tradition, and I'm going to start at Ward One with Alderman Prill.
I did ask Colleen to put an item up on the screen. I came across this quote from Edward Everett Hale recently, and I thought it would be very apropos for this evening's events. Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success. So tonight, we are coming together as a new board, so this is our beginning. It is my hope that we can keep together, which is progress, and hopefully that we can work together as a board, which will be success, and that will be success for the city of New Bern. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Royal.
Thank you. First of all, I certainly would like to express my appreciation for the opportunity to serve in this great city of New Bern. I believe that the potential for us to move forward together as a community, as a city, is very much available to us. I appreciate the opportunity to work with my fellow board members and with the great staff in the city of New Bern. And finally, I certainly would like to say, together we win. Thank you.
Alderman Astor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I too would like to thank the new board members and looking forward to working with each and every one of you. We've got a job to do, and I'm ready to get it started. I also would like to thank my constituents in Ward Three for all the support, the telephone calls of support, and we've got a lot of work to do, especially with this new interstate coming through over by our neighborhood, and I'm ready to start work. Thank you.
Good. Alderman Kenzie.
I'm ready to go to work, and it's an honor to serve with the new board, and it's just waiting to the next meeting to see what the agenda is all about, to start the work.
Alderman Brinson.
Well, Mr. Mayor, looking at my comments, they're pretty long, I guess, compared to what I have, but, Mr. Mayor, fellow Alderman, distinguished guests, city staff, and beloved family, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. As has been mentioned several times, this night has been a long time in coming. The words of Solomon, when he finally was able to dedicate the temple in Jerusalem, seemed very appropriate. Oh, Lord, God of Israel, there is no God like you, in heaven above or on earth beneath, keeping covenant and showing steadfast love to your servants who walk before you with all their heart. I truly wish to give God the glory and thank the citizens of Ward Six for my being here. As a friend of mine frequently states, concerned citizens should find good candidates, get them elected, and then hold their feet to the fire. I'll remind my fellow board members that we're now being held to the fire. Some of you may be used to that, but for others of us, this is a new experience, and while I'm new to this board, I do want to give you a few observations. I think we're being held to the fire to make decisions for what's best for New Bern, to have a dialogue with each other and our constituents, to figure out what best looks like, and to be transparent in those decisions. The problem with those standards is these twice-a-month meetings do not lend themselves well to dialogue with each other or with our constituents, which also leads to complaints about lack of transparency. I see communication as both our challenge and our responsibility. I'll tell each of you and our constituents now, I'm a very good listener. To that end, I'll be reaching out to you, our city staff, and some of our constituents for a dialogue about where we should be headed as a city and about the problems that our city faces and some of the solutions, and I will continue that over the next three years. Conversations are two-way streets, not one way. If you're concerned you're not on my list or I'm not taking too long to get to you, please reach out and touch, get in touch with me, and let's talk. I don't know what I don't know. I have no problems talking or meeting with anyone. We cannot have a civil dialogue without the dialogue. My perception of some in this city is that we spend a lot of time talking at each other rather than with each other, and that includes our digital media and our social media. I want to change that. While we will not always agree, I will listen before I speak, and I will understand before I decide. So if you have a question or concern, call, text, or email me, and let's talk. I'm also proud to represent the New Bern veteran community to this board. I think that there are unique contributions that veterans can make to our great city, and I will work to bring that perspective. Based on my military experience, I want to let you know upfront that I have an overdeveloped sense of duty and a work ethic to match. I will work hard to get things done correctly the first time and in a timely manner. That's the way God made me. So, Mr. Mayor, fellow Alderman, fellow citizens, neighbors of Ward Six and city staff, I look forward to many productive conversations and making plans and decisions for the betterment of our great city. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess it's my turn. I didn't prepare any notes or comments. Didn't quite know that the first meeting was going to be as emotional as it turned out to be, but I did want to certainly thank my wife, Jeannie, and my son, Gavin, for their support through all this. The Bible that I took the oath on was given to me by my mom and dad, who I know are up above looking down on us tonight. I realized that this was not an easy task, running for mayor. Oftentimes, when you're up here, regardless of what seat you may be in, you're faced with challenges, you're faced with opportunities, and this board is going to be no different. There's new faces, there's new personalities, but again, there's new opportunities. And as I look in the audience and see some familiar faces, I see some supporters, I see some non-supporters. That's the reality. After the election, we walked in a restaurant, I looked at my wife, I said, "How does it feel knowing half the people in this room don't like you and half of you do?" But at this point, the elections are over. It is time to govern, and it is time to move New Bern forward. I'm proud. I'm proud to have served my hometown for nine and a half years, and I look forward to the next term. And you have my utmost promise and trust that every decision I make will be done so with the best interest of the city of New Bern at heart, and I trust that my fellow board members will do the same. At this time, I will entertain a motion for a brief recess.
Seen moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. If you would, please join us. There's some goodies and... If you would, please, join us. There's some goodies and a time of fellowship with the, uh, new board members. Okay, we are going to reconvene our meeting, and we're moving to item number seven, which is the appointment of the mayor pro tem and the administration of the oath. Is there any comments or any motions from the board on who that would be?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that, um, Johnny Ray Kinsey serves as the mayor pro tem.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Astor and a second by Alderman Royal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Alderman Kinsey.
Thank you, sir.
I believe, uh, city clerk will administer your oath.
Yes, sir.
If you place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. I, Johnny Ray Kinsey, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God.
I will.
I, Johnny Ray Kinsey, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as mayor pro tem, so help me God.
I will.
I, Johnny Ray Kinsey, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
I will. Thank you.
Did just wanna give the opportunity if staff has any comments before we move on.
Nothing tonight, sir. We look forward to working with everyone as, as we move forward.
As do we. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Say a move.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.